At this time, I want to invite you to join in a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Sumter School District, November 8th, 2021 Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting is held in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. The news media has been notified and a copy of the agenda has been made available to the public. This meeting is open to the public, but with limited first come, first served seating due to COVID-19. All persons wishing to attend the meeting by virtual means may do so via YouTube Sumter School District Board Meeting and Sumter School District's Facebook page. Mission: The mission of Sumter School District is to equip students to be responsible, successful, and productive citizens in a global society. Vision: Sumter School District develops and cultivates competitive students who embrace diversity, act responsibly, and contribute positively to society. Our board members are Yost Truly, Dr. Barbara Jackson, Area 7 Chairwoman; Dr. J. Frank Baker, Seat 8 Vice Chair; Dr. Darrell McGaney, Area 5 Clerk; Mr. Brian Austin, Area 1; Mrs. Cheryl Ray, Area 2; Mr. Matthew McLeod, Area 3; Dr. Johnny Hilton, Area 4; Dr. Gloria Lee, Area 6; Dr. Sean Reagan, Seat 9; Mrs. Robin Mills, Deputy Director of Installation Support, Sharp Air Force Base Representative. Dr. Penelope Martin Knox is our Superintendent; Mrs. Amy Hansen is the Administrative Manager. This meeting is now called to order. I just want to thank those of you that are here this evening at the meeting and those who are joining us virtually. I also want to say, thanks for the Thanksgiving being upon us. I want to recognize our gratitude as we celebrate also Veterans Day on Thursday, November 11th. And in recognition of Veterans Day, all schools will be closed. And I would like to thank each of you for your continued support of our school district and your attendance here this evening as well. The approval of Agenda 2.1, with no objection, the agenda stands approved as written. Okay, 3.1 Guidelines for Public Participation. The Board of Trustees is pleased to offer time on the agenda for public participation both in person and electronically. At this time, we will open the floor not to exceed three minutes for each participant. Following in-person comments, Executive Director of Communication and Community Engagement, Ms. Shelley Galloway, will read the electronic submission. We have three individuals that have submitted requests for participation. And the first one we will hear from is Dr. Roosevelt Myatt. And he would like to address the imbalance and transportation of the district. Dr. Myatt, would you please have a seat at the table behind the screen? And thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the Board, to acknowledge our chairperson, Dr. Jackson, and our Superintendent, Dr. Knox, and all the other board members. Thank you for the opportunity and privilege for being able to address the Board tonight. I know you have an awesome job to do in this district. And especially with the realignment study going on. And regardless of what you do, I'm sure it's not going to please everybody. And it's going to be just as it was when we did consolidation. We didn't like that, and there could be folks that don't like this as well. But I hope in your decision-making and in your study of the Board, that when we look at the imbalances of lines and that in the district, and I can speak specifically about Area 1 because I'm familiar with it. I'm also familiar with the eastern end of the county because those are the areas that I have worked in. As I studied the maps that you have and looking at them, and I was hoping that the district would be looking at inclusive all the resources that you have. Simply because if you're looking at it futuristically for realignment, it saves taxpayers money because you wouldn't have to worry about building new schools if we use the resources that we have and make those accommodations now. Because to do it over again is going to be another big problem. For example, I look at Wedgefield, Manchester. And of course, the lane is closed with charity. You still have children on the map going from Wedgefield all the way to Manchester, which is at least 15 miles. And for whatever reason, it has been that way. Looking at it, when you look at the Chaffs Road, that is the old, and that is still now, not old, that's still the line now for Seventeen used to be.
Excuse me, Dr. Myatt, your three minutes are up. If you would, would you give us those concerns in writing? Because also, if you'd like to, you can enter those online to the realignment.com. And we would certainly appreciate knowing those concerns, so your three minutes are up at this time.
Mr. Washington said he'll yield his time to me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Okay, thank you. I'm thinking about those lines, and in order to do it equitably, those lines have to take some of the burdens if you move them inward. It looks like a honeycomb. If you move those lines inward, then that takes some of the burden off the city schools. When you look at those lines, you know we have the doughnut, and those schools are there. But if we were to, if you were to bring out some of those, come in and have most students out, it'd be equitability for our students' attendance would be as great in the city, and there'd be more students spread across the county. I just think that if we, and another thing, to include the schools that are already closed. The Lane School, and I could say is one of our landmarks in the district since 1911. And of course, if we did not change the lines like they are now between the railroad tracks, the lane might have still be open today. But when you put them between the railroad track, where there's nothing there, and that's the way it was. So the lane is closed. But I appeal to you to look at the imbalances and also to look at adding or reviewing the opening of building a school in the process of doing this. And that's my skill. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Myatt. The committee will take your information into consideration, and the Board will get back to you in ten days. Thank you so much. Our next person here to address us is Mr. Chris Benahan. Mr. Benahan, please be seated at the table. You have three minutes.
May before I begin, if I have excess time, can I re-allocate that to this gentleman here? Does he have time enough to give his away? Mine should be pretty quick. Thank you.
Well, with even, thank you all very much for allowing me the chance to answer a few questions. I'll try to keep this as quick as I can. These are all not related at all, but just something on my mind as a parent and citizen in the Sumter community. First question is, when would the mask mandate be lifted in Sumter schools? What criteria and or data are you using to make that decision? Second question, this may have should have been directed towards a high school, and so I apologize. What courses are currently available to high school students to enhance their financial IQ? For example, what classes can they take now that would teach them how money works, how to invest, how credit works, et cetera, et cetera? And if those classes do currently exist, how can we, as parents, view the content that is covered? And I'm kind of talking, you know, things that are a bit more advanced, how to balance a checkbook, things like that. Last question, number three here, who approves what courses are offered at the schools in our community? Is that something that is decided locally amongst the Board? Or is that something that's done at, I guess, at the state level, per se? That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Benahan. Your questions will be addressed, and we do appreciate your coming before us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Dr. Myatt only has two minutes. I think Mr. Washington has time. And I think there's two minutes left for Mr. Benahan. He has one minute, three minutes.
All right, Mr. Washington, we have three minutes. Between Dr. Myatt's time to do that and Mr. Benahan, you have three minutes. And thank you so much for coming before us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and greetings to the Board from Sumter County Council District 1. I simply stopped by to address some of the things that I've been reading in the Sumter item about the proposal for Rafton Creek Elementary School, which is in District 1, which of course is the county council district that I and my constituents live in. I want to remind the school board that Rafton Creek Elementary School is in the most northern part of Sumter County and the only elementary school in the area. And I want to encourage this Board to do everything it can do to uplift Rafton Creek. And if that includes some of the proposals that are on the table, then that is exactly what we should pursue. And I would imagine, if that is done, that there would be additional resources given to Rafton Creek, which frankly have been lacking in the last several years. So I was very happy to see the proposal. I want the Board to know that I'm interested in seeing the proposal fleshed out. And I'm also interested in making sure that this school board does everything it can do to make sure, as Dr. Myatt mentioned, that the lines and the schools and the services that they provide are equitable and balanced. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today.
And thank you, Mr. Washington. And thanks to each of you who took out of your schedule to be the bestest people. We do appreciate your coming to us, and I assure you that we will be getting back if you have any concerns or your suggestions. Thank you so much. And we're now moving on to our board.
Do we have any assignments, or are we not trying?
Oh, I'm sorry. Shelley, do we have any electronic?
No.
Board participation, public participation?
No, ma'am. We don't have any additional submissions.
I'm sorry about that. Normally, she tells me I have a tablet.
We did have one for Mr. Benahan, but I don't know if it's the same, Mr. Benahan. We just want to confirm. Did you submit an electronic submission as well, an email about masks?
Yes, ma'am. That was me.
Okay.
All right. And thank you, Ms. Galloway, as well. All right, we are now moving on to 4.1, the announcements. Trustees, are there any announcements that you would like to hear this time? Yes, Dr. Hilton?
Thank you. As you may recall, the Rotary Clubs of Sumter provide dictionaries for all of our third graders in the district and the sorority for all of our sixth graders. And this past week, I had the privilege of delivering some dictionaries to Millwood and Kingsbury. And this week, I will be delivering some dictionaries to Lemire and some sorority to Alice Drive Middle and some dictionaries and sorority to R.E. Davis, courtesy of the Sumter Rotary Clubs.
Let them along with me. Appreciate that, Dr. Hilton, and thank you as well for sharing that information. Any other announcements? Okay, Dr. Lee?
Yes, I would like to say again, congratulations to all of our principals. I had the privilege of going to several different areas and dropping off the beautiful cups and the packages that say congratulations, and we appreciate all of our principals for all that they did. Sumter High, the Career Center, Bates, Wilder, Kingsbury, Furman, Pocalla Springs, all those schools I was able to go by and give all the principals a handshake they've given their cups. And again, thank you, Dr. Jackson, for the great suggestion, and they all appreciate it.
Mr. Austin?
Yes, I just would like to say, on Friday, I was able to attend two out of the three playoff games. And just wanted to say congratulations to Presswood High School and to Sumter High School on their first round playoff win. And great job to Lakewood on a season well played.
Thank you. Dr. Lee?
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. The last time we met, and I want to be in order, I don't know if this is going to fall under the committee report, the policy committee, but we approved a first reading, Policy ADA, and the School Resource Policy, KMG. I've got some concerns after we approve first reading on those two policies and from one or two board members as well. Apparently, we should have, we were supposed to have a discussion with the policy committee on bringing together the old mission and vision and the new one, and that did not happen. And I was reminded of that, and I'm going to ask that the policy committee...
That's an update on the committee report? Okay, that's supposed to be an update on the...
That's what I'm saying, it would be in order, so I can wait to...
Yeah, we just wait until Brian, Mr. Austin, gets to the policy. Any other announcements? I would like to just say that our principals were delighted in that we saw fit to give them, we sent them a card, and we also delivered them cups. Different ones of us went throughout the district so that we could serve all of our principals. So they were delighted that we thought enough of them to, and we all gave them a mug saying, "The influence of a good principal can never be erased." And they were beautifully done, and they wanted to say thanks to each and every one of you. And I do appreciate those that had time or could make time within their schedule because I know that some couldn't, but those that could, all of us got out and delivered and made sure that all of the schools and all of the principals did receive mugs. And I haven't seen it yet, but there is a collage, I think, that Shelley has done with all of the principals that received, you know, that's in the district to just pay a special tribute to them and let them know how much we appreciate them for all that they do for the children and Sumter School District. So thank you, board members, for joining in the effort. I appreciate it, and they do too. Okay, any other announcements? If not, we will move on to the committee reports. And I would like to just remind everyone that the next full Citizen Advisory Committee will be April of '22, 2022. However, our subcommittees will continue to meet until that time. And that being said, I'd like for our subcommittees to report out at this time. Dr. Reagan of Facilities?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Facilities Committee met this past Wednesday, November 3rd, here at the district office at the time of 6:00 PM. The work ahead of this committee currently revolves around the various aspects of the district's facilities and provides as much advice to this committee on behalf of the district's administration. With that being said, this past meeting, we, the committee, received an update from the district's operations, Mr. Samuel Myers, concerning the work accomplished as it relates to the facilities. Mr. Myers shared with us, and a full lengthy report is given in our board docs. But just to name a few, he shared with us on behalf of the committee the work that has been completed, just to include R.E. Davis awning and concrete work being completed at this time. And the soil sample for the field project has now been completed as well. We also had the opportunity to hear from Mr. Cato, our new director of maintenance. And he reviewed school dues and the work order process. This process is currently being streamlined and given a universal approach on how to work the work orders and how to assess and address it within the entire district. And a number of other items were mentioned during this meeting as the work continues. Just to mention, as I mentioned, I think in our last report, our schools' visits are doing an awesome job, our committee's doing an awesome job with our school visits. And as we walk the grounds of those facilities in which we have the opportunity to visit a number of schools already, collectively, we, the committee, have noticed that the facilities are quite old and been built in the 1950s, and some of the renovations, as you look at it, have not been made probably till the early 2000s. So we are keeping that in mind as we're reviewing and walking those campuses on behalf of the Facility Committee. I want to also mention to the committee and the subcommittee how important it is that we all take time out to be a part of these visits. I think it is very important that we all participate if we're a part of this committee so that we can have a say-so in the discussion as we bring it forth with our committee. I also would like to thank the committee as well as the administrative staff, Dr. Penelope Martin Knox and Mr. Myers, as well as Mr. Cato, and all the building administrators that help us, or guide us as we go through those school visits as a committee as well. Our next scheduled meeting has not been set yet. However, we will get that date and share it with the full entire Board at a later time. Our next school visit is November the 18th, and we will be traveling starting at 9:30 to Lemire Elementary School, Pocalla Springs, and Lakewood High School. As always, we, the committee, is more than happy to share that schedule with the full entire Board leading up to our next visit. At this time, this concludes our facilities report this evening, and thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Reagan. All right, our next report will come from Mrs. Ray from Finex.
Okay, the Finex Committee met Thursday, November the 4th, and we did have a few recommendations that we wanted to bring to the Board. One was that the Board Chairwoman request a presentation of current salary scales and changes needed. And ask the administration to tell us how they want to accomplish this task. We also want to request that the plan to put the high schools in compliance with Title IX be presented to the Board with a timeline. And then in our discussion, we found out that there's still some issues with the broadband for the computers, not just for the individual students, but also our schools. So we wanted to recommend that the Board get involved in some discussions with our Sumter City and County Councils and the legislators, you know, they were looking into that. And we don't know what the status is of that right now, but it's something that we really need to work on for our district and for the students.
And that concludes our recommendation. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ray. And we will keep those recommendations in the board's mind. All righty, Mr. Austin, policy?
Yes, ma'am. The Policy Committee brought forward for second reading, or brings forward tonight for second readings, Policies ADA, District Goals and Objectives, ADD, Base Covering, IHAC, Social Studies Education, and K LGA, School Resource Officers. The trustees received the updates with the meeting material. Updates to the following administrative rules were reviewed, IKA-R, Grading Assessment Systems, and IKF-R Graduation. Additional discussion or review with the Policy Committee will continue regarding educational equity and the Open Care Training Act. If I may, address the concern of Reverend McGaney regarding Policy ADA, District Goals and Objectives. The Policy Committee met on October 18th, and during that time, the Policy Committee had a lengthy conversation regarding the policy and the concern that Reverend McGaney brought up. It was the consensus of the Policy Committee to bring before the full Board at our October 25th meeting that we will move forward with the revised vision and mission statement. The issues were addressed as far as the marrying of the current vision and mission statement with the revision. It was the will of that Policy Committee to bring forward that we would accept the will of the people and of the stakeholders that was involved in the process, which included our students, our staff, our community members, as well as members of the Board. We all had ample time to address our concerns, give our input, and the consensus of that stakeholder conversation was that we would go with the revised vision and mission statement. So to say that it was not addressed by the Policy Committee is not true. We can look at the video from the Policy Committee where we had a lengthy conversation regarding that. And it came from the Policy Committee to the full Board at our October 25th meeting, I'm sorry. And there was a motion made on the floor, the motion was seconded by Reverend McGaney, to move forward with those policies, with the revised vision and mission statement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Austin, for your update from the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Brian, for that information. I hear what you're saying, that it went back to the Policy Committee, and the Policy Committee decided that it wants to move forward... move forward with the Revised Vision and Mission. But my recollection was is that we were going to have some discussion with the board regarding taking our previous vision and mission and perhaps adding to it, to amend it somewhat. Now, perhaps it was an oversight on my part that when it came up for a vote in October, that I didn't bring it up, but I'm bringing it up now, is that, again, my recollection was we had some discussion in here with the board and there was some concern about the new, the new mission and vision. And we discussed, some of us felt like we would be happier with combining some of the new with some of the old, and that we would talk about it. And so, again, I was remiss for not bringing it up in October, but I'm bringing it up now, and so perhaps we may have some more discussion when this comes up for a vote. That is possible, right?
Yes.
Yes. So that's where I stand on it, is that I wasn't, and I apologize for not bringing it up in October, but I'm bringing it up now, thank you so much.
Austin McGaney?
Yes. Mr. Austin, you're absolutely correct. We had some conversations at the Policy Committee meeting, but we did not talk about the merging at our Policy Committee meeting at all. And furthermore...
We had a lengthy conversation.
Okay. I don't know where I was, but my...
Sitting next to me without making a...
And I, and I did, I got, and I did vote it for it to proceed. But as I stated, after I voted the past first reading, I was, there was some conversations, some discussions after that, I was contacted. And to be here all night, I'm going to recommend that we pull Policy ADA and School Resource Policy and take that back to the Policy Committee meeting so we can discuss that prior to second reading. That's, that's what I want. Instead of being here all night going back and forth. Because I, I'm now here with some other committee members as well who don't remember the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McGaney. Brian, redress?
At the Policy Committee meeting, Reverend McGaney brought up the same issue. And I'm sitting, sitting in between two of our Policy Committee members. And those of you that have viewed the Policy Committee meeting could see the conversation, hear the conversation that was had. And that question was brought up about marrying the two together. When we went around the table, the members of the committee said that they were not in favor of marrying the two, the Revised and the Current Vision and Mission Statements together because it silenced the voice of the stakeholders. Where you had students that gave input, you had staff that gave input, you had members of the community to give input, you had members of this board to give input. And we were not going to negate the fact that all of those voices were heard and that was the consensus of all of those voices was to go with the New Vision and Mission Statement. The conversation came up that we need to continue to revisit, to revisit this because there were members of the board that had an issue with going with their Revised Vision and Mission Statement. Now, I don't know if Dr. Lee or Ms. Ray would like to enter into the conversation, but when we had this conversation about it staying in committee, the committee said we were taking for first reading the Revised Vision and Mission Statement. When it came before the board at our last meeting for first reading, Dr. Jackson called for the motion, the motion was made. She asked if there was any discussion, there was no discussion. We're now here for second reading, and now we want to send the Vision and Mission Statement back to policy. Then what's the point of having stakeholder voices? What's the point of having committee, a committee meeting on it if we're going to continue to allow this to go back to committee? We can have a discussion about it, but I think it should be the will of this board to say if we're going to go back to the committee or if we're going to vote on second reading tonight, if there's any amendments to it. Now you're on my time for my thought week.
Okay, let's, can we finish our discussion? I think that's the end of the discussion, isn't it? Let's see, under the discussion until, until reaction. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll have the remainder of this discussion before the action tonight. When we come back into our executive session. Okay, thank you. All right, you now look down to Transportation, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, you have had an opportunity to review in board docs our information that we received at our last committee meeting. And I'm just going to hit some high points. And then I'm going to give the recommendation. And I'm also requesting that the board either by consensus or a vote make a decision on the issue, so Mr. Crawford will be able to proceed with his work. So these are the high points that I just wanted to make before I present the issue to you. Mr. Crawford's presentation included a process and timeline for realignment. Up dates since the last meeting were included, an option score chart, evaluation data, and transportation distance data, and detailed reviews of options one B and two B. The additional statistics for all grade levels were provided in the same format in a statistics handbook. All needing information, documents, and maps are accessible via somperrealignment.com. Our next committee meeting is scheduled to begin at six P.M. November the eighteenth. And in addition, there are public community sessions scheduled for six P.M. in December the sixth at Crestwood High School Fine Arts Center, December seventh at Lakewood High School's Fine Arts Center, and December eighth at Sumter High School's Auditorium. Now, here's the crux of what I'm bringing back as the chair of the committee with the consensus from our committee members. During the questions and answers section, it was confirmed that Mr. Crawford and his staff were working at implementing a mapping system that will allow for addressed location for the options. Now, the issue at hand is this. If you recall, both options include increasing the size of Raffington Creek. Currently, we have about a hundred and seventeen kids at Raffington Creek. Option one and option two would increase the numbers at Raffington Creek to somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred or maybe a little better than three hundred. But the options do not improve transportation efficiencies. And that was one of the criterion that we were using as we went about this realignment study. The average distance for K-five students from home is three-point-five-eight miles. And the options, option one A and one B or two B, increase from three-point-five-eight to three-point-six-two because of moving students to Raffington Creek. And as was mentioned earlier, I believe by Mr. Washington, Raffington Creek is our school that is located in the furthest northwestern section of the county. So there is quite a distance in travel time. So when you factor in that travel time, that does cut into the efficiency of transportation. Also, utilization was a factor here. Currently, Raffington Creek's utilization is only eighteen percent. But with option one and option two, the utilization would increase to forty-eight percent and forty-seven percent respectively. And the current utilization for all fifteen schools is fifteen, or fifty-two percent. And that's the all current, current, as we have our fifteen elementary schools, utilization when you average it is fifty-two percent. Now, here is what the committee is bringing to the board. The committee will need to get clarification on, or through a consensus of the board, or either a vote by the board on whether to enlarge the attendance area of Raffington Creek Elementary School, or keep the school's attendance area small, which is translating into this. Are we going to decide that we are not going to include Raffington Creek in this configuration and leave the hundred and seventeen, hundred and twenty kid population in place? Or are we going to include it and add the numbers to approximately three hundred? So the decision has to rest on the board, and we're asking for consensus or even a vote. Because, Mr. Crawford, obviously, whatever decision the board makes tonight will impact how Mr. Crawford proceeds. Now, I want to yield to Mike and Brian and Cheryl to say, is there any other thing or any ideas? Yes?
When it comes to the consensus of whether or not to enlarge the attendance area for Raffington Creek or to keep the school's attendance area small, I don't think, I don't think it's even a worthy question to be asked because we're doing a district-wide boundary study. So why at this juncture would we isolate one school? Because it impacts the average distance and miles for elementary transportation. Option one B for Raffington Creek would increase the average travel distance by one-point-eight-two miles. Option two B would increase it by one-point-three. Overall, for elementary travel time from three-point-five-eight, as it currently is for all our elementary schools, it would increase for option one B to three-point-six-two, which is zero-point-zero-four mile increase. Overall, for elementary schools under option two B is zero-point-zero-five. On the realignment criteria that was unanimously voted on on July nineteenth, the last line of that realignment criteria says, "All criteria are in no particular order of priority. And the best plan is one that touches on all criteria but does not focus solely on one element of the criteria." When you look at the demographic study that was done in the spring of twenty-eighteen, one of the areas that stands out to me is an area that will become a part of Raffington Creek's attendance area. And that is that of L.B. State, where it said that there were forty-nine total lots and twenty were future development. Well, I'm a resident of everyone, I represent everyone. I live up the street from Raffington Creek. And every day that I pass by L.B. State, I see continued growth. So therefore, I know that the forty-nine total lots in the twenty is under representation of the growth and development in Area One and the area that will become part of Raffington Creek's attendance area. But I also want to bring our attention to something else that we talked about. And that was educational equity. Are you now enrolled at this board? On March eighth of twenty-twenty-one, our educational equity policy says, "Students will be provided equitable access to instructional materials, assessment, curriculum, support, facilities, and other educational resources and services that reflect an appreciation for the diverse cultural perspectives, identities, and the needs of students by strategically differentiating allocations that's necessary to remove barriers and improve outcomes." We're doing this boundary study to address educational equity in the county. For one time in Sumter County's history, if this boundary study is completed and is approved, it would not matter, or it should not matter, what zip code you live in, the quality of education that you receive. I don't see how we can have a conversation to even have Raffington Creek staying as a small school as it is when we're doing a district-wide boundary study. Another bullet point in this educational equity plan that we approved says the district will strive to create a welcoming, inclusive, and bias-free culture and environment that values respect and is responsible to the diversity of students, families, and the community. Respectfully civil discourse and interactions among staff members, students, families, and community members is expected at all times. I think having the question of why are we going to leave Raffington Creek off the table is a slap in the face to those individuals that live in the Raffington Creek area or those that have students that go to Raffington Creek. Why would Raffington Creek be the school that's left off the table when we're talking about a district-wide boundary study? It was back in December of twenty-eighteen that a Sumter branch of the N.W.A.C.P. asked this board, where I had just become a member of this board, to address attendance lines. At that time, the administration said, after virtually talking with everybody, the district couldn't find a way to make rezoning work. Here we are, three years later, Mr. Crawford found a way to make it work for everyone in Sumter County. The district at the time said schools closer to the city of Sumter were small enough that if students were pulled out and rezoned to other schools, it would just create a much smaller school. In most cases, if you took kids from those schools, it would be Robin Peter to save Paul, and we would just end up with more smaller schools. We're not ending up with more smaller schools, we're ending up with more efficient and equitable schools in this district. It is my hope and my desire that this board will enlarge the attendance area for Raffington Creek Elementary School. I've heard the comments in the community, I've heard the comments from my colleagues on the board, that we'll be moving kids into a school that people don't want to attend. That's not true. People aren't attending the school because the school isn't, isn't equitable when it compares to other schools in the district. If we increase enrollment, you have to increase the resources in that school. You have to diversify the school to make it more attractive to people. I hear the concerns, and I feel as though I can say this as a child of a Marine Corps veteran, so I do understand the military experience, that the military doesn't want to send their kids to Raffington Creek. But if you look at the detailed maps that's on this wall, the walls around this, this room, the communities that will be moved into the Raffington Creek attendance area are not primarily military communities. They're families that belong to me, some members of our audience, and maybe even some members that sit around this table. Military families are accustomed to change. The average assignment of a military family is anywhere from two to three years. We had to get adjusted to change when it came to consolidation. But here we are as a board, able to work together on most things for the common good of the students. I hope that tonight, that we can work together to make sure that Raffington Creek and every school in this district is equal to one another and that no child should feel the need that they have to attend another school that they're not living close to to receive a quality education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
And I'd like to echo what Mr. Austin just said. I think one of our goals in this realignment should be that all of our schools would be where anyone would want to go, and not fable one school over the other. That's been a problem. You know, we have some schools that are perceived as better. Some of it is because of historical perceptions, I think. Many of the schools have not been visited by people before they decide they don't want to go there. But if we try to make things more equitable with the schools as we're doing these lines, then I definitely agree that Raffington Creek needs to have a larger population.
Mr. Clark?
Just going to add to the same things that both of them said. As long as we're going to offer the same things in every elementary school, every middle school, every high school, then our students, our parents shouldn't have a problem in sending their children to the school that they're zoned for, regardless of where the lines are drawn.
And I think us school board members were in agreement with everything that's been said, and Brian's encapsulated it quite well. But the bottom line is, as a committee, we couldn't give that directive to go ahead for Mr. Crawford to proceed. So that's why we, as a committee, had to bring it back to the board. But I think we were all in agreement that, going back to the point, one of the points that Brian made was, this is a district-wide thing. And everybody's going to give a little bit and everybody's going to take a little bit. And everybody's going to give a little bit and everybody's going to take a little bit, so to speak. But it's being done as equitable and also it's still a draft. So there's still changes coming along and every time we have a meeting, things, uh, have come up. And the other thing that was encouraging at our last meeting, uh, last Thursday, at that time, we had forty people who had logged in and made comments, given suggestions, ideas, or had questions or whatever. So we hope that's going to increase and we sure hope when we do the public presentations, December sixth, seven, and eight, we're going to get some input. And going back to the military, as Ms. Mills shared with us, I think at our last board meeting, she is actively working the base population, so to speak, through community meetings and various types of meetings and she could certainly explain that better than I can because she deals with it every day. But that's a very good thing because the parents are getting firsthand information from the military community. So we're getting the word out. We're doing the best we can. But ultimately, we got to come back to this and like I say, I, I feel that our board committee members are all in sync with this. But again, we, as a committee, we can't make that decision. We've got to have a board make that decision. Thank you, Mac and Cheryl.
Yeah, and I just want to make a clarification based on the article that came out in the item. Um, I think there was some confusion with military families because they thought that uh, living right next to Shaw Heights and High Hills and, and Oakland, that they were now going to be shipped, uh, uh, bused to Ra- uh, Rattin Creek. Um, but the lines, uh, and, and I just want to make sure that it's clear, you're not proposing to enlarge what the study's already looking at. You're just looking at, uh, keeping options one B and two B, which do not include the base housing or affect the base housing on Shaw Military Base. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay.
Did I say the other thing? Yes, Dr. Hilton?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, I just want to share some thoughts here, if I may. Um, um, Brian, I'm sorry that you feel that because Rattin Creek is a small school, that the educational opportunities there are less than those of other schools. If that's the case, then we should have been addressing these inequities all along. The inequity is not, what you've just said is the inequity. There's an inequity there and it's going to get fixed if we put more people there, which is an unfortunate philosophy. Um, and I would hope that the folks that work at Rattin Creek don't share that philosophy. I hope that their philosophy is they're providing a high-quality education for those hundred and seventeen or eighteen students. Secondly, um, um, when I look at the numbers that are in this study, which you alluded to about the live-in, attend-out. Rattin Creek has the highest percentage of any school in the district of students who live in that area but attend out of it. Now, I don't know why that is, but that is, the, the numbers that Mr. Cropper presented to us say that almost one-third of the kids who live in the Rattin Creek zone go somewhere else. I don't know what those reasons are, but there must be some reason. So that concerns me that we want to put more people in a school where one-third of the families that are zoned for that choose to send their kids somewhere else. The other, one other issue is if we put more kids there, then teachers are going to have to drive farther to get out there than they currently do. I hear what you're saying about base housing. But, and I don't know how many of those two hundred kids that would be put there are military kids that live on that side of the base. But I'm sure there are military people who live on that side of the base. I don't, I haven't done any research on that, so, so I don't know. But an even greater concern which impacts this whole study, two things you said, that the criteria were evenly weighted. Well, I do believe that in the last Transportation Committee meeting, Mr. Cropper said, based on the points which Dr. Baker alluded to, he said, um, in, included an option score chart evaluation, which, which means that the, 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 the criteria are not evenly weighted. The highest weighting goes to number one, which is at the top of the list, which is balanced school facility utilization. That's why this study has told us to put two hundred more kids in Rattin Creek. Cause its utilization is like eighteen percent. So when the highest criteria, when the highest weighting on the study is to put people where there aren't people, it doesn't take into any other factors. The, the, the weighting that was given to minimize impact on students was something like three points, was it not? Isn't that what he said at the last meeting? There was thirty points given to, um, to, um, balanced utilization. And I mean like three or four points given to lessen the impact on students. So, so I'm, I'm broad, I'm broadening out here from just Rattin Creek to, to this whole paradigm, this whole algorithm that we're about to move two thousand high schools to us around is based primarily on utilization of the school building. And I don't think that's a good formula. But going back to Rattin Creek, uh, again, there are some issues specifically dealing with Rattin Creek that I personally would not be able to support putting more kids in a school where people are concerned about sending their kids there now. And, and, and then the other thing about this entire study is the whole point of it was to reduce, the reason it was given to the Transportation Committee was to reduce transportation time. But here we have an algorithm that because the balanced utilization outweighs the transportation, in this particular instance, we're sending kids farther, which again gives me concern about the entire study. Are you, you following what I'm saying here? If we're sending kids farther to Rattin Creek, how do we know we aren't sending kids farther to other places as well? This whole study has some issues in my mind. And, but, and, but we're on Rattin Creek now and I would not be able to support putting more kids in Rattin Creek. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you and thank all of you for your discussion. Okay, Dr. Lee.
I just wanted to ask Dr. Hilton, what were some of the reasons why people don't want to go? You said that there was some-
I, I don't know what the reasons are. I'm just quoting the statistics.
Okay.
It, the, the statistics are in the charts that Mr. Cropper gave us. It's the live-in, attend-out statistics. And then you have your, your, your live-out, attend-in statistics, you know? The school with the lowest of live-in and attend-out statistics are Sumter High. Only six percent of the kids who live in the Sumter High zone go out somewhere else. That's the lowest in the district. Just to, just to throw out a number at you. Rattin Creek has the highest number.
Okay, um, the last.
Just a couple of responses to, to Dr. Hilton. You said you didn't understand why there was such a high of live-out when it comes to Rattin Creek. You've been on the board longer than I have.
Live-in, attend-out.
Live-in, attend-out. You've been on the board longer than I have. Have you come to the Rattin Creek area to talk to the families and see why that is an issue? You said that we should have been addressing those issues long ago. You said we should have been addressing those issues long ago. If that is the philosophy of, of me and others about Rattin Creek, then I challenge you to meet me one day at Rattin Creek and talk to some of the families that were at Rattin Creek or that now attend somewhere else. And one of those issues is something that I brought up. The allocation of resources, the diversity of the student body are just a few of those issues. When you go to Rattin Creek and you go to Oakland, you go to Alice Drive, there's a distinct difference from the facilities to the academic programming offering at those schools. There's not even after-school programming offered at Rattin Creek. So when you say that we should have been addressing those issues, you're absolutely right. And those issues should have been addressed long before I even stepped foot on this board. So I challenge you to come to the Ri- the rim of Rattin Creek area to talk to families and ask them, why do they send their kids elsewhere? And everything that I've said tonight is because of the conversations that I've had with individuals that either attend Rattin Creek or those that choose to send their students, their children elsewhere.
And let me just say this, um-
May I respond to what he just said?
I, I wouldn't make a statement. Uh, I think that the Facilities Committee, and that's why we have some of these committees, they will be addressing some of the inequities as far as the buildings are concerned. And I think that that would help all of the schools that we feel that don't have adequate access to program or equal facilities. And, and I think that the Facilities Committee is working hard. And then all of the committees together, the Finance Committee, everyone is collaborating and that might help solve some of the issues that we are talking about. You have, you can quickly respond, uh, and then we'll have to go back.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but I believe you misquoted me. I said, I think what I said was, is that you said there were educational inequities. I said those should have been addressed. We should have been addressing those. If people at Rattin Creek are feeling like they're educational inequities, hopefully they would have expressed those concerns. I didn't know that the live-in, attend-out statistics were what they were until we began this study. So we have this information now. We're looking at it. We're making decisions about moving forward. I think that's a critical piece of information for me as I make a decision about how we should move forward with what to do about not only Rattin Creek, but every school. Because I have looked at the live-in, attend-out, attend-out, li- uh, uh, live-out, attend-in for all the schools. And we may have a future discussion about some of this data because it is very enlightening when you look at the live-in, attend-out, live-out, attend-in data for each of, for all of our schools. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And thank, I, I mean, this is a very valuable discussion that we're having here. And I would just like to say this, regardless to what the board decides, majority rules. And I'm just asking everyone that's on the board, support the wishes of the majority. Uh, we have to make a decision. We have to move forward. So let's not go out and not support the, the wishes of the majority. Because whatever the majority wants, it's coming from all of us. I may not have voted in favor, but the majority rules democratically. So, um, thank you for a value, very valuable discussion and, uh, we will move on at this time. Okay, uh, we're now down to four point three, the legislative update. Dr. Hilton?
No report, please.
Uh, I would like to, uh-
Yes, yes, ma'am. Excuse me. We're trying to get a consensus.
We, we got to get a consensus now, Bob?
Yeah, we got to have action on the public consensus.
Okay. Well, we are up for a consensus. Ask, we question again, Dr. Baker.
All right, uh, the committee, uh, needs clarification from the entire board. A consensus from the Board of Trustees on whether to enlarge the attendance area of Rattin Creek Elementary School or keep the school's attendance areas small. So if we could get a consensus on that. Uh, Dr. Hilton has stated his position.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Ray has stated hers, and Ms. Austin's, and here's, and Mr. Cloud, and myself, at least, running the game. What's the, okay, the job of the Facilities Committee?
Well, I'll order here, if I may.
Transportation.
Um, yeah, I'm a little confused about consensus and a vote. If we're going to take a vote, we're going to have to do it at the end of the next meeting. We can't go around and poll the board here.
There's objections.
You can't vote now. You can't vote now to the end of the meeting.
Okay, well, um, you would have, have to have an action item after next meeting, uh, on the agenda for, for that. Okay? Because we have a one person that's, uh-
We don't have an action item in November or April.
It will be December.
December. And our next meeting is November eighteenth, I believe. Is it in way that we could go ahead and do an action, um, tonight and then take a vote? Yeah. And I'm just thinking about the timing. The timing for Mr. Cropper to proceed with the things that he needs to be doing. And we don't have the public presentations, December sixth, seventh, and eighth. So what I was thinking is, can we bring some conclusion to this prior to those public meetings?
No, Chairman.
And-
Uh, can I make a comment? I don't understand why you have to vote on the one item when you're, the whole study has a number of items that we're looking at. Why are we pinpointing and have to vote on Rattin Creek? It's already in the proposal. Why is it that we have to have a consensus? What brought this up?
Um, because the committee did not have the authority. The entire board is the one that has the authority, so the committee had to bring it back to the entire board. But you're absolutely right in what you're saying. But this became, uh, something that was discussed and was presented by Mr. Cropper. And, uh, we as a committee were in agreement to move with, no, we're going to treat Rattin Creek like the rest of them and increase enrollment. But again, the committee did not have the authority to give Mr. Cropper to go ahead and do that. We had to bring it back to the entire board.
But again, it implies that it's changing what's on this board around the thing. You're not changing what is already in the proposal that is being looked at in the study, correct?
Yes, ma'am. You're correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I agree with Ms. Mills. Unless we want to change the study, it requires no action by the board. So if we can't take a vote tonight, then it just means that the, that the study proceeds on as it is. Or either you can call, have a call meeting and take a vote. But the only reason you need to vote is to change it.
Right.
It's not changing. And, and if the committee doesn't want to change it and we don't have the votes to change it, sounds like I'm the only person who has a concern about increasing the enrollment, then we don't have the votes to change it anyway, so it's sort of a moot point, in my estimation. That's your point, isn't it, Ms. Mills?
Yeah, and once you start changing the rezoning criteria, you want to, you, you can change it every time we meet. So, I mean, you need to let it play out. Let the community have their voice. Let us have these public meetings. I mean, if parents, uh, have objections, they need to, we need to hear from them. It's not our opinion that matters. It's the parents of the schoolkids and the people that are affected that matter.
Well, and, and I agree with you. Our committee feels the same way. But we were just coming back in the, the spirit of bringing everything back to the entire board. But now, in, in my interpretation, I understand what Dr. Hilton has said and certainly Ms. Mills has made an excellent point. And to me, that constitutes a consensus. So when we meet with Mr. Cropper, we need to say, proceed with the study that we was outlined. So, when we meet with Mr. Cropper, we need to say, proceed with the study the way it was outlined. Okay?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, thank you, uh, very rewarding discussion, and you know, uh, that's how we, that's how we move forward, discussing things in the, in the spirit of father's spirit and moving forward. Okay, thank you so much, um, and, um, so Dr. Baker, your, your, your point is?
Thank you, ma'am, yes, ma'am, thank you. And thank you all that have certainly shared some valuable input tonight. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, and that being said, we're now down to four-point-three, and Dr. Hilton, you said that you did not have?
No, no report tonight, thank you.
I would just like to make an announcement, uh, in reference to the legislative update, that SCASBA Legislative Assembly is December third through six. Uh, and, uh, we do have some representatives going to that. Uh, we'll need to look at that document tonight. Uh, I think Dr. Reagan, Dr. Lee, and I will be the three persons delegates that, uh, will have voting rights at that conference. Uh, and we will need to look at that document tonight as well, uh, for discussion. So, I just wanted to say that you will have representation at the Legislative Assembly in December. Yes, Mr. Austin?
Um, I'm not sure if this fits under the legislative update or not, but we received, and just to bring attention to members of the board, if they have not received it or seen their email from SCASBA. Um, on Friday, SCASBA Board of Directors held a special call meeting to review a briefing and receive the briefing to consider and review the timeline of events and discuss the resulting impact in our state at present and in the future of their relationship with the National School Board Association. And after careful deliberation, the board voted to withdraw SCASBA's membership from NASBA effective immediately and request a refund of SCASBA's twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two membership dues. Um, thought that was just something that we needed to, you know, be aware of, that we're no longer a part of the National School Board Association.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, that being said, and we are, we are moving now into four-point-four. The SCASBA Delegate Assembly handle, um, trustees, where you provide the time, you will provide the time to review the resolutions and additional information for consensus input pertinent to the SCASBA Legislative Delegation in December. Uh, like I mentioned, we will have, each have two votes during the Delegate Assembly on behalf of the Board of Trustees. And do any of you have any input regarding the resolutions or other information regarding the actions at the Assembly? Any input as far as the, the document itself is concerned? Okay, hearing none. We're now down to five-point executive session. We're now at the point of the executive session, and I want to thank the public for joining us this evening, and we hope you will be with us when the board returns to open session. And if you are unable to do so, um, please remain safe and be safe. Thanks, each of you, and trustees, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates pending, threatened, or potential claims, receipt of legal advice pertaining to contractual matters, discussion of negotiation incidents to propose contractual matters or arrangements, discussion of negotiation incidents to propose property contractual matters or arrangements, discussion of personnel matters, and discussion of personnel report employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of an employee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on second to enter into executive session for the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates pending, threatened, or potential claims, receipt of legal advice pertaining to contractual matters, discussion of negotiations incidents to propose contractual matters, arrangements, discussion of negotiations incidents to propose property contractual matter arrangements, discussion of personnel matters, and discussion of personnel report, employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, termination, and/or release of an employee. Is there any discussion? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, and the board is-
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed contractual matter for legal services to firm aid in regards to the superintendent's evaluation.
A motion, uh, has been made. And second, to approve the proposed contractual matter for legal services to firm aid regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Uh, is there any discussion? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Austin, I would you give second?
The motion passes unanimously. We're now down to seven-point-three personnel report. Dr. Mark Knox, do you have a recommendation for the personnel report?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I ask the board to approve the personnel report as discussed in the executive session.
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the superintendent's recommendation and approve the November personnel report.
Second. Okay, um, a motion has been made, and second, to accept the superintendent's recommendation for board approval of the November personnel report. Is there any discussion?
The motion passed?
The motion passes. Okay, we're now down to, uh, seven-point-five. Trustee, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board postpone second reading of Policies ADA Goals and Objectives in KLG A School Resource Officers until the Policy Committee can have additional discussion.
Second.
Uh- Dr. Lee?
Okay, the motion that the board postpone, uh, second reading of Policy AD, uh, Goals and Objectives and KLG A-
ADA.
Hmm, ADA? ADA Goals and Objectives and KLG A School Resource Officers until the Policy Committee can have additional discussion. Is there any discussion? Please cast your vote. The motion passes. Okay, um, seven-point-six?
No, we have a second motion.
Oh, a second motion, okay, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the board approve second readings of Policy ADD Face Coverings and IHAC Social Studies Education.
Second. Okay, a motion has been made, and second, that the board approve ADD and IHAC, uh, for second reading. Is there any discussion? Yes.
No.
No.
Fine.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Pass.
The motion passes. Uh, we're now down to seven-point-six, uh, the SC, SBA Delegate Assembly Resolution, Proposed Constitution, Bylaws, Bylaws Changes. Trustees, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the votes cast by trustee attendees at the Delegate Assembly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made, and second, to approve the votes cast by trustee attendees at the Delegate Assembly. Any questions or any discussion? Please cast your vote. The motion passes. Okay, um, with no objection, the consent agenda is approved. And I'd like to say closing remarks to all of our meeting participants and viewers. Please continue to take the necessary steps for yourselves and your families to remain safe and healthy, and thank you for being with us this evening, this meeting. Uh, having no further business, the meeting is adjourned. At nine-thirty-five-